Good evening and welcome to the City Council's April 2 regular City Council meeting. I am Cecilia Taylor, Mayor of Menlo Park. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating in City Council chambers. Please note public comment speaker time may be limited. First, I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council member Maria Dorr, Betsy Nash, and Jen Woolison. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, City Clerk Judy Heron, and Deputy City Clerk Sarah Sandoval. Deputy City Clerk, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Happy to do that. For those in attendance who would like to make public comment during this evening's meeting, we ask that anyone in person fill out a speaker card at the back table and return it to us at the clerk's desk. For anyone joining virtually, please use the raised hand feature at the bottom of your screen to indicate that you'd like to comment. And those joining on a landline or cell phone can do the same by pressing star nine. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. That concludes the instructions.
Thank you, Ms. Sandoval. The next item on our agenda is closed session. City Clerk Sandoval, Deputy City Clerk Sandoval, can you please call for public comment on our closed session, item C1?
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. If anyone in attendance would like to make a public comment on item C1, conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, please go ahead and use that raised hand feature in the bottom of your screen or press star nine now. This will be our final call for public comment on item C1. And Mayor Taylor, we do not have any hands for C1.
Thank you, Deputy City Clerk. And at this time, the City Council will adjourn this meeting and reconvene in closed session. We will reconvene the regular meeting no later than 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay, and now that we have the City Council back at the dais, Mayor Taylor, we can reconvene the meeting.
Thank you. Good evening again. I am Mayor Cecilia Taylor, and I would like to recall the meeting to order for the City Council's April 2nd Special and Regular City Council Meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating in City Council chambers. Please note, public comment speaker time may be limited. First, I would like to do roll call. I would like to reintroduce City Council members and staff present: Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council members Maria Dorr, Betsy Nash, and Jen Woolison. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Nira Doherty, City Clerk Judy Heron, and Deputy City Clerk Sarah Sandoval. Deputy City Clerk Ms. Sandoval, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. For those in attendance who would like to make public comment during this evening's meeting, we ask that our in-person attendees fill out a speaker card at this back table and return it to us at the clerk's desk. For those joining us virtually, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen to indicate that you'd like to comment. And those joining on a landline or cell phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. Thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Deputy City Clerk Sandoval. Report from closed session. I would like to introduce City Attorney Nira Doherty for our report out from closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is no reportable action.
Thank you. Next item is agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members under City Council member reports. Does the City Council wish to pull any items from the consent calendar or informational items for discussion to be heard after the last regular business item G1? Thank you. Does the City Council desire to modify the order of any agenda items? Thank you. The next item is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. It is helpful but not required if you state your name and city of residence. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. I will call for public comment at the appropriate time for members of the public to address City Council on any item under agenda sections, presentations and proclamations, special business, study sessions, consent calendar, regular business, and informational items. Deputy City Clerk Sandoval, please call for general public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. For anyone in attendance this evening who would like to make public comment on an item not on this evening's agenda, we ask that you go ahead and fill out a speaker card at the back table if you're joining us in person and return it to the clerk's desk. Anyone joining us online can use that raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen, or if you are using a landline or cell phone, you can press star nine. This will be our final call for public comment for items not on the agenda for this evening. And seeing no hands, Mayor Taylor, please continue.
Thank you. The next item is item H, Presentations and Proclamations. We have five proclamations this evening. Deputy City Clerk Sandoval, do we have any public comments on items H1, H2, H3, H4, or H5?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Alrighty, if anybody would like to make public comments on our proclamations this evening, which are: Item H1, a proclamation for Autism Acceptance Month; H2, a proclamation for National Poetry Month; H3, a proclamation for National Library Week; H4, a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week; or H5, a proclamation for Earth Day. Please go ahead and fill out a speaker card at the back table if you're in person and return it to us at the clerk's desk. If you're online, you can use the raised hand feature at the bottom of your screen or press star nine now. This will be our final call for public comment on our proclamations, items H1 through H5. And Mayor Taylor, seeing no hands, please continue.
Thank you. H1, Autism Acceptance Month. The first proclamation will be on Autism Acceptance Month. April is Autism Acceptance Month. The recognition raises awareness about autism acceptance and promotes inclusion and connectedness for people with autism. In celebration of Autism Acceptance Month, we honor the contributions of people on the autism spectrum and the autism community to our nation and the world. As the fastest-growing developmental disability in the United States, with an estimated one in 46 children identified with autism spectrum disorder, fostering inclusion, understanding, and empathy, we can reshape societal norms and demonstrate our commitment to ensuring equal opportunities for all. Together, we can build a world that appreciates and respects every individual, regardless of their neurological differences. And is there anyone here today to accept the proclamation for Autism Acceptance Month? Thank you. H2, National Poetry Month. Initiated in April 1996 by the Academy of American Poets, National Poetry Month is currently the largest worldwide literacy celebration. It encourages booksellers, libraries, poets, publishers, and schools to promote the importance of poetry and its significance to society and culture. National Poetry Month is a marvelous opportunity to celebrate the expressiveness, delight, and pure charm of poetry. It is a special occasion that reminds us of the integral role of poets and poetry in our cultures. Poetry helps us appreciate the world around us and emphasize with one another, excuse me, empathize with one another. Please join in the many events hosted by the city by checking the online calendar, menlopark.gov/calender. Here to accept the proclamation is the Menlo Park Library Foundation President, Ms. Stein.
Stand in photo. The new style. I know. Thank you. Thank you, Elise.
The next proclamation is H3, National Library Week. April 7th through 13th is National Library Week and is an annual celebration highlighting the valuable role libraries, librarians, and library workers play in transforming lives and strengthening our communities. National Library Week is a time to celebrate our nation- to celebrate our nation's libraries, library workers' contribution, and promote library use and support. The theme of National Library Week 2024 is Ready, Set, Library, illustrating the idea that in our always-online world, libraries give us a green light to something truly special, a place to connect with others, learn new skills, and focus on what matters most. No matter where you find yourself on the roadmap through life's journeys, preparing for a new career, launching a business, or raising a family, the library provides an inclusive and supportive community where everyone belongs. Is there anyone here to accept the library proclamation?
Mayor Taylor, we have from the Friends of the Library, President Stephen Haas and Library Commissioner Jennifer Wise, and it looks like a few others. I've unmuted the podium mic if anybody would like to speak.
It would be wonderful. Would you like to say? Congratulations.
Happy things are good.
The next proclamation is H4, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Every year during the second week of April, the telecommunications personnel and the public safety community are honored. This week-long event, initially set up in 1981 by Patricia Anderson of the Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office in California, is a time to celebrate and thank those who dedicate their lives to serving the public. In 2023, the Menlo Park Police Dispatch Team answered, wow, 9,475 911 calls, with 90% of those calls answered within 10 seconds or less, and 23,657 non-emergency calls, with 97% of those calls answered in 15 seconds or less. This week, we acknowledge their hard work and dedication to keeping our communities safe. Here to accept the proclamation is our Police Chief, David Norris. The next proclamation is H5, Earth Day. Earth Day was founded in 1970 as a day of education about environmental issues. The holiday is now a global celebration that sometimes extended into a week, a full seven days of events focused on green living and confronting the climate crisis. Today, not only is Earth Day meant to increase awareness of environmental problems, but it is also becoming a popular time for many communities to gather together, to clean up litter, plant trees, or simply reflect on the beauty of nature. Don't miss the Third Annual Love Our Oath Festival on April 13th at 10:00 a.m., Bloom House in East Palo Alto. You'll learn how to go electric to build healthy and resilient communities from people who know and who've done it. It is a free educational and fun event where families, where a friendly family outdoor activities. You can look forward to art, sometimes reptile shows, excuse me, storytimes and reptile shows, as well as vegan cooking demos and delicious lunch options at the plant-based market. Here to accept the proclamation is our Environmental Quality Commission Chair Nancy Headley, Vice Chair Jeff Schmidt, and Commissioner Eduardo Peligri-Leopart.
Oh, no, I'm not.
And we have Eduardo on screen.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say a couple of words. The first is, thank you for the proclamation and for your ongoing commitment to climate activism. It's great that it's a priority for the city again this year. I was going to talk about the Love Our Earth Festival, but thank you for speaking to that, Mayor Taylor. And I also just want to say tonight is a really important milestone with the program that's on the agenda for later tonight for home electrification for lower-income homeowners in the Bellhaven neighborhood. This is important not only for climate action, but also for environmental justice. And so many people have worked really, really hard to get it to this place. And I just want to say thank you to everyone, city council members, city staff, EQC members, present and past, as well as local nonprofits, and especially including Menlo Spark, present and past members of that. Yeah, so thank you, everyone, and I look forward to actually support, like getting that money spent and having those homes be electrified so that the folks in Bellhaven can experience cleaner air and safer homes. So thank you all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is I, Special Business. Our special business this evening is Planning Commission applicant interviews, excuse me, introductions. Deputy City Clerk Sandoval, do we have any public comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. For anybody who would like to make public comment on Special Business Item I1, Planning Commission applicant introductions, if you are in person with us in the chambers, please fill out a speaker card at the back table and return it to us at the clerk's desk. If you are joining us online, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. And if you are on a landline or cellphone, please press star nine now. This will be our final call for public comment on Item I1. Alrighty, and seeing no hands, Mayor Taylor, please continue.
Thank you. Deputy City Clerk Sandoval, please provide instruction on how the introductions will go and also introduce our two applicants.
Happy to. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Our two Planning Commission applicants are with us in person, one in person and one virtual this evening. In addition to their submitted applications, they have prepared a brief statement of interest to present to the City Council, after which there will be time for the City Council to ask follow-up questions. I'll also note that there are no appointments being made today. Appointments for all current vacancies on all advisory bodies, including Planning Commission, are scheduled for the City Council meeting on April 16th. Happy to take any questions. And after that, we can jump right in with our first applicant, Katie Beruzzi.
Are there any questions from City Council members? Please proceed.
All right, Katie.
Okay, hi. I'm Katie Beruzzi. Most of you know me. And I'm surprisingly nervous. Also, I'm reading from my phone because my printer didn't work. So bear with me. My name is Katie Crocker-Beruzzi, and I am honored to be considered for the Menlo Park Planning Commission. By way of brief background, I'm a North Carolina native who moved to Menlo Park when I was in grad school in 2002. I lived in a triplex on Waverly Street a couple blocks away until 2015, when my husband and I bought our house in Flood Triangle. We have a 17-year-old son. And I am an active member of the Menlo Park, of the Trinity Parish in Menlo Park. And for the last eight years, I've served on the Complete Streets Commission. I'm also an active performing amateur violinist. Professionally, I worked in the nonprofit and education sectors, most recently overseeing the social innovation curriculum at Stanford GSB. But for the last five years, I've spent the majority of my time parenting and volunteering in this community. I started out on the bicycle commission, hoping to bring my perspective as a cyclist and parent to the development of safer routes. I've appreciated working with all of you in this quest to improve the safety of our streets and sidewalks. Over the last eight years, my interest in our community affairs has expanded. In particular, I've become aware of the ways in which our land use choices shape other things we care about, not just safety for people walking and biking to school or work, but also the intertwined issues of climate change, social justice, and our housing crisis. The Planning Commission plays a critical role in helping shape major developments, general plan updates, and capital improvements around our city. The Commission is tasked with ensuring that projects conform to our local policies and regulations. This feels like a great place to serve for someone who cares about seeing Menlo Park continue to evolve and thrive in the years to come. While I'm not a professional planner or architect, I've actively engaged in many of Menlo Park's public planning processes, such as the Transportation Master Plan, the recent Housing Element Update, the council redistricting process, and other things like that. I've attended dozens of commission meetings and council meetings, and I have a general sense of the knowledge and preparation required. I'm comfortable working on the dais. I've learned a little bit not to stick my foot in my mouth over the years and have a working understanding of Robert's Rules of Order. And I have, through, I think as I said in my application, I feel that through the work I've done with community organizations over the years, I have a pretty good sense of our community but look forward to getting to know it better. Happy to answer any questions, but I would be honored to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beruzzi. Are there any questions from council members? Thank you so much for applying, and we appreciate the introduction that you shared with us. Thank you.
And Mayor Taylor, our second Planning Commission applicant is Misha Sillen. Misha, I'll promote you to panelists. You should be able to unmute yourself and start video if you'd like.
Hello, good evening. Yeah, my name is Misha, and thank you for considering me for the Planning Commission, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Combs, City Council. Apologies for not coming in person today. I'm just a little bit sick. I would have loved to be there in person, but caught the latest preschool bug going around. But yeah, to give just a small amount of background on me and why I'm interested in applying, I'm a District 4 resident for almost three years now. I'm a father of two young children. I've lived in California for over 25 years. And my background is, you know, career-wise, is I've been a small business owner for the past five years or so, and I'm currently in the process of starting a new business here in Menlo Park. This would be my first commission that I'd be serving on, but I've done a lot of volunteering in different local organizations, as you can see in my application. And I've always just been passionate about the communities I've been a part of in different places I've lived in California. So seemed like a natural fit to apply. My main reasons for applying for the Planning Commission, you know, generally, I have been involved in Menlo Park's planning process as a housing advocate the past few years. I've attended meetings, City Council meetings, as well as Planning Commission meetings and submitted letters and public comments, and have become pretty familiar with a lot of our land use policies. I'm generally passionate about local issues. I think they're important and they affect a lot of things for the community, like, you know, equity issues, just general quality of life. And I think a lot about, you know, the growth of our community and its future. On a more personal level, I've always had an interest in real estate development. It's something I've looked into career-wise, but hasn't fully materialized quite yet. However, I have been through the Menlo Park planning process as an applicant for permits at my house, so I've had some experience there. And also, I've spoken with a number of Planning Commissioners, current and former, as well as City Council members to get an idea of what's involved. And it's something I, you know, being a Planning Commissioner is definitely something I see myself being excited about and participating in full-on with passion and commitment. If selected, I'd be excited to work with staff and council on various land use issues, housing, commercial, and everything in between. And I would be honored to serve on the commission. Thank you.
Thank you for your introduction. And are there any questions from City Council members? Well, Misha, thank you so much for applying for the Planning Commission. We really appreciated it and also for your introduction. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item J, Study Session. Study Sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the City Council in the near future. City staff will provide a presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the City Council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The City Council will not take enaction on items addressed in Study Session. The City Council may provide direction to staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the City Council for action. The Study Session item tonight is Item J1, Review of the 2023 Aquatics Operator Annual Report and Survey Results. Here to introduce this item is our Library and Community Services Director, Sean Reinhardt, and Library and Community Services Supervisor, Tricia Mullin, and Menlo Swim and Sport CEO, Tim Sheper.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. If you would be so kind, give us just a moment to set up the presentation. Thank you for your patience. Just be one more moment. Thank you for your patience. Okay, thank you again for your patience. Looks like we're all set up now. Yes, I'm Sean Reinhardt, Library and Community Services Director. Joining me here for this presentation is Tricia Mullin, Library and Community Services Supervisor, and Tim Sheper, CEO of Menlo Swim and Sport and Team Sheper. This Study Session is to review the 2023 Aquatics Operator Annual Report and Survey Results. We're going to tag team the presentation. We're going to try to be fairly brief with the presentation so we can get to the questions, but we'll just walk through a few highlights from the report and survey. So again, this is a Study Session. It includes those two pieces, the annual report and the citywide survey. Some requested City Council feedback tonight that staff is seeking, feedback and direction from the City Council about the Burgess Pool program performance, and user feedback from the annual report, feedback about the proposed 2024 pool schedules and programs at Burgess Pool and Bellhaven. Feedback about the proposed 2024 pool schedules and programs at Burgess Pool and Bell Haven Pool, and desired focus areas for the proposed working group of Menlo Park residents who would informally meet with the aquatics operator and city staff to provide feedback about aquatics operations. Plus, any other feedback and comments the city council may have is most welcome. So I'm going to turn this section of the report, walking through the annual report, to Mr. Sheper.
Thank you, Sean. Okay. There we go. So the report emphasizes two overarching themes, which are sharing performance data and comparing to other aquatics programs in the region. And we used seven comparison metrics to do that. And one is the volume of hours that were open, the spectrum of program offerings year-round in instruction, recreation, and competition, the quality of our programs led by trained, certified, evaluated, safe team members, the history of being a sustainable, reliable, productive organization, the value of our low-cost programming rentals and daily use, the care and effort we've devoted to safety and user satisfaction, and the facilities that can accommodate and serve families, people, all ages, and abilities. The 2023, the community aquatics programs that we offer are AquaFit, Aqua Wellness, which is therapy and recovery, Bridge, which is essentially a large group youth swim lesson, Family Recreation Open Swim, Lab Swim, lifeguard certification courses, Menlo Masters, which is an adult swim team, small group and individual swim lessons for water safety, a women's water polo team, and then youth swim teams. The next, yeah. Yeah. So this next table is the resident and non-resident visits. So just a bunch of numbers showing what program and the percentage and numbers of residents versus non-residents. And so just drawing your attention to that, there's over a hundred and twenty-five thousand visits in 2023. And that number does not include the rental groups' visits, rental visits. And this is the first year of the city's and the operators' shared goal of achieving at least two-thirds residents, sixty-six percent residents. So you could see in the Open Swim memberships, the Lab Swim drop-ins, and the Open Swim drop-ins have strong resident use, whereas AquaFit, Masters, Swim School, Swim Camps, and Lab Swim, there's opportunities for us to draw in more residents. And so this is, these numbers provide a solid baseline for us to be implementing some strategies to grow our resident usage and using two main things, which will be promoting aquatic programming through the assistance of the city marketing channels and using the hyper-local fees at the new Bell Haven Pool. And this next chart just shows a bit about our instructional programming. And it's titled Lessons in Camps. And the camps are in there because our camps provide many lessons. So each child on camp, in camp gets a lesson per day. So that adds up into the annual total. So that's about thirty, over thirty-four thousand lessons were given through group lessons to children, group lessons to adults, private lessons to youth and adults. The Bridge is put in there, which is that large group swim lesson. And Summer Mavericks, which is just an extension of the Bridge. It's just, it's named Mavericks in the summer. And then, and then the camps. And that's how we arrive at that thirty-four thousand number. This, this next is the comparison data. And this is using Lab Swim as something to compare to the other pools, other community municipal pools in the area. So just like to draw your attention to the hours per week. And you could see that Menlo Park comes in at ninety to ninety-two hours per week. So that's, that's a high volume in comparison to what the others are offering, as well as the number of lanes available. And then it, it, it shows a bit about the fees. And the fees are, if you're doing daily drop-in, it's, it's, you know, moderately comparable to the other facilities in the area, meaning that we're about right in the middle. Some charge a little bit more, some charge a little bit less. However, if you look to our monthly model, which is set up and designed to take or allow the community members to come to our pool very frequently and have a low-cost daily entry, where if you're a senior who swims, if you're a resident senior who swims very frequently, four, five, six times, even seven times a week, your daily entrance to the pool is in the $2 range. And that's something that is not, there's no comparison to that in the region. The next part is about projected 2024 schedules. So Burgess has its accepted, tested schedules, and its scheduling rhythms that have been developed over the past eighteen years of operation. They've, they've been refined, and, you know, there's some involvement or evolvement of it. But things are pretty straightforward. The community knows what to expect. And in the case of Bell Haven, I hope to go through the same process that we did as we developed the Burgess schedule. Just, it took a bit of time. It took a little bit about finding out what the community wants, how they're using the pool, what programs they're attracted to, what programs we have, what programs we don't have, and then let that schedule develop over a period of time based on user data. We do have a plan in May when we, when we open up, which will be entering right into our summer programming. We want to get that pool operating from six AM to eight PM during the weekdays, and then six AM to five PM on the weekends. And then we could collect all that data, and hopefully, we have, the demand is high enough, the usage is robust enough that we can continue those hours into the, into the fall. And then the, the last slide that we have is about safety training and our emergency plans. So safety is our, is our top priority. So we're only as good as, as we take care and take care of the well-being of our, of our visitors, you know, period. So we, we coordinate through the county of, with the County of San Mateo Health Department and the city of Menlo Park to ensure well-maintained facility and a safe environment. We comply, of course, with all the safety regulations and requirements. We're subject to regular unannounced inspections by the Health Department. And we are, we have an independent safety review that, that is done annually, which was just conducted this past week. And just to mention our, our setup, there's, there's always two to six staff lifeguards on at all times, two to six staff lifeguards. In addition, there's a, what we call a manager on duty, or it could be an assistant general manager, or even a general manager, and they're all lifeguards and certified, as well as some of our executive team are also lifeguards, including myself. And so there's always a, a large array of people to, to help in situations that call for it. And there's a continual in-service training cadence. It's a monthly cadence that we go through, and we work on water rescues, alertness, CPR, first aid, and et cetera. So.
Thank you, Tim. I'll go ahead and go through the Aquatics Resident Survey. Delivery of the survey, we went out with English and Spanish, electronic and print between January thirty-first and March twenty-fourth of this year. It was directly mailed to every household in District One. There were twelve hundred and eighty-five responses electronically and eleven responses that were in print. Eighty-one of the responses were submitted by residents. Fifty-seven percent reported that they live in Menlo Park for at least ten years or more. Thirty-five percent of respondents reported that they visit Burgess Pool frequently, and twenty-two percent reported that they never visit Burgess Pool. This slide is a slide of those that are satisfied with the programs at Burgess Pool overall. Thirty-eight are very satisfied. Down to about six percent are satisfied, which is actually very good results, and this information is in your packet. Onto the next slide. How likely are the respondents to visit Bell Haven? Thirty-seven percent not likely, and eight percent not very likely, and the very likely and somewhat likely in between, about fifty-five percent in that, in that category. So good responses to the survey.
Thanks, Tricia. Thanks, Tim. Just a couple more slides here. The survey also included a couple of questions with open-ended comments. There were over eleven hundred comments received. They're all in the packet. They had a wide range of perspectives, summarizing briefly around accessibility and affordability, around program diversity and various recommendations or desires for schedules, around the facilities and maintenance, around the program management, engaging the community, quite a bit of support for the current aquatics operator, but also a number of comments, concerns, complaints, questions. So a wide array there, but that's kind of a quick summary, and we're happy to delve into that in more detail if desired. We also asked respondents if they would be interested in participating in the focus group that was mentioned earlier. Twenty-six percent of the over one thousand respondents said yes. We'll, we'll see how many answer the call when we reach out to them. But we would like some feedback from the city council about the kind of the focus areas that we'd like to begin with that group and any other comments you may have. And there's a list here, I won't reiterate it, of what the intended activities for the group would be. And here's that summary of the feedback, really about the report for Burgess Pool's performance in 2023. We'd like some feedback on that. Feedback on the proposed 2024 pool schedules at both pools, and also, again, those desired focus areas for the working group. And that concludes the presentation, and we're very much looking forward to answering your questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any clarifying questions from city council members before we go to public comment? We'll move on to public comment. Deputy City Clerk Sandoval.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Anybody present this evening who would like to make public comment on Item J one? If you are with us in the chambers, please fill out a speaker card at this back desk and return the card to us at the clerk's desk. Anyone online who would like to make public comment, you can do so by using the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Or if you are using a landline or cellphone, please press star nine to raise your hand if you would like to make public comment on Item J one, Review of the 2023 Aquatics Operator Annual Report and Survey Results. This will be our final call for public comment on Item J one. Seeing no hands, Mayor Taylor, please continue.
Thank you, Deputy City Clerk Sandoval. We'll bring it back to the dais. Are there any questions from council members? Any questions on the survey? Any thoughts? I have some initial thoughts that I can share, and that is that it was very detailed. And I appreciate that with all the information, especially the number of respondents. I still haven't gotten through all the comments, so I appreciate that. It's quite a few. I mean, find my questions. So just looking at the, the comments, is there opportunity to provide additional lap swim lanes? I think that was a comment. What I'm really interested in is how likely can we start with addressing some of the comments first as opposed to looking at something new? I just figure, why not address what the public has requested? So just wanted to find out. Besides having it listed on the, on the paper, like, is there a process that you can consider to actually address some of the concerns that were brought to you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I think this Study Session is an excellent opportunity for the city council members to highlight areas such as this. I think you mentioned lap swim lanes, so that staff and the operator can kind of take that feedback and see what we can do to implement some of the direction and feedback that we get from the city council.
Thank you. And is there opportunity? I know this is a Study Session, and we talked about cost recovery and fees already, but fees were mentioned in here as well. So access to the lap swim, but also there was, I saw a request for lower costs, especially for seniors. But I saw something, and I'm not sure if we've addressed it already, and that is making it no cost for anyone under a certain age, whether that's five years old. And here it asks specifically for two years and under.
Thank you, Mayor. There are a number of different comments about fees, you know, suggestions, ideas, needs, desires. The city council recently adopted the aquatics fees as part of the master fee schedule. As part of that discussion, the city council did identify some additional opportunities to revisit the fees again by the end of this calendar year. Staff is planning to do that. Part of the information that would be brought forward to that discussion later this year would be some actual usage at the Bell Haven Pool in particular to really understand, you know, what is that revenue stream looking like? What is the usage looking like? To get some experience with the actual programs that seem to be most popular, particularly for hyper-local residents. And then use that to help inform City Council's decision-making about potential revisions to the fees in that next go-around.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Went to a couple of other questions that I that I have. And this is more about the, I know that in the expenditures, it doesn't specifically show cost of senior management. Is it possible for that to be something that is visible for the council?
Yes, thank you for that question as well, Mayor. We would need to circle up with the operator agreement to understand the the depth of detail that the agreement calls for to be shared for a private operation. I don't believe that level of granularity, as far as individual employee compensation, is called for in the agreement, but we'd take that question in good faith, and we could look at the agreement, circle up with the operator, and and see what form of information can be provided to help answer, I think, your question.
Thank you. And I'm I'm not sure if you understand why I'm asking, but just looking at what the just looking at the expenditures and the revenues and what's left over. So, it just, it makes it hard to visualize being able to function if the profit is so low. So, that's why I'm asking. The other is because I'm really interested in, of course, hiring locally. Just wanted to find out if that the position that was open for the Bell Haven Pool, I think it was management, if that position was filled? Mr. Sheperd?
Yeah, I'll return to Mr. Sheperd for that one.
Yes, that position was filled. It was filled with the individual who was at in in that same role at Bell Haven before it was closed. So, he's already had two years of experience at Bell Haven, and then an additional three years at Burgess. So, yeah, he's been on staff for for several years, and so he's going to be our our general manager out there.
Okay, thank you. Question for for Mr. Reinhardt, and that is, did the youth commission participate in the survey?
Thank you, that's a good question. The survey was distributed citywide to all residents. We, it was an anonymous survey, so we don't have information as far as like individual participants in the survey unless they volunteered their contact information. But what we do have, and it's listed in the survey results, is we did ask people to identify the age group that they're in. And that data is showing that the the vast majority of respondents were adults ages 29 and over, and younger adults and youth, like youth commission members, was a very small minority responded. So, for future surveys, really focusing on getting more responses from younger adults and youth appears to be something we should really focus on.
That that would be helpful. And I think just emailing our youth commission or even announcing the survey at a youth commission meeting, I think, would help to get more more input from that age group. And then also, they'll share it with their friends, so we would have, I think, just more input. Just following up with other City Council members to see if anyone else has any questions. Councilmember Nash?
So, following up on the new Bell Haven community campus pool, now that you can see the pool, sort of, what are your thoughts about the pool, and especially about access with the locker room? And how people will access the pool and the locker room?
That that is a great question, and it's a very timely question. We're actually meeting with Mr. Sheperd and his team in the week or two ahead to really nail down those details. We do want to have controlled access to the pool deck and also to the other areas of the facility, whether it's the gymnasium. We think we have some good ideas and techniques for doing that, but it's all in the details because it is a shared locker room. It can be entered from the pool deck. It can be entered from the lobby. We we think we have some pretty good techniques to do that, but we're not quite ready to talk about them in detail. But maybe at a future BHCC subcommittee meeting, we can dive into those details. They're not quite ready for primetime yet.
I don't know that I need to know the details. I'm just very happy that they're being worked out, and you've got a solution. Thank you. Councilmember Dor.
Thank you. I want to echo appreciation for the thoroughness of this report. Thank you to staff and to the Sheperd team for all the work that went into this. One, two things that I noted in here, looking at the comments, was just the excitement for folks to be able to have open swim time, the excitement to have more lap time as well, which might contradict one another. But just seeing that desire for pre-form access to the pool resonated with me as I as I looked through this. And so excited to see us continue to build out these programs in ways that reflect the community needs. And I appreciate, too, that you've mentioned that there will be moments to revisit this as the new pool gets built. And so, I I feel very comfortable with the direction that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for this report and for, I'm really happy that the city is conducting our our own survey. And it looks like the satisfaction levels are still very high, so that's a that's a really good sign. About the locker rooms, I know this is a city. What's the status of updating our locker rooms? Because that seemed to be a theme.
You mean at Burgess Pool? There is a lobby renovation project that's in the design phase now. I might need to look to the deputy city manager to provide details if they're needed. And addressing the locker rooms is now considered to be a part of that project. I'm not sure in what context more detail would come back to the City Council. I do know that the capital improvement program will be discussed by the City Council, I think, later this spring and May or thereabouts. So, we might be able to give some more details about that project. But we we are aware of the locker rooms and the lobby at Burgess Pool. They have been on the CIP to do some renovations there, and that's moving along in the design phase.
Okay, that's great to hear. Yeah, I just think that the open-ended portion of the survey is has, you know, a goldmine of of information. And I understand that, you know, it's a process to balance the needs of this limited resource of pool lanes and pool space. But I would just encourage you, both the operator and the city, in those discussions going forward, to really listen to this feedback that the community is providing because this is what I've been waiting for, to hear kind of, not necessarily the people who are avid users want, but like, what would get people to go? And so, I'm always a fan of piloting different things, you know, maybe maybe trying some things out. I love the idea of ramping up our our marketing of the pool's availability. And yeah, I just, it sounds like we have some happy swimmers, and I'm reminded to go back, check out the pool. So, thanks.
So, along those same lines, I was very happy to see how many people responded to the pool survey and want to make sure that we're actually looking carefully at what we can take away, what can be acted upon, so that people are encouraged to respond again and that this wasn't just idle exercise. So, the items that jumped out at me are, first of all, the costs. And if to look at what we can do, obviously not immediately, but it's when it when you come back to reduce resident, the fees for residents, that seemed like it was a strong message again and again. Another one was, as has been discussed by other council members here, the access to the pool for both open swim and lap swim. One of the things that, there's always a tension between the teams and the use of the pools before work, noon time, and also after school, after work. And so, for example, the instructional pool at Burgess is not available from like 3:15 to 7:00, 7:15, because it's being used by the various teams. The performance pool also has teams in there, so that there's very little lap swim time. One of the things that people are talking about, mentioned in the survey, was that they were looking for more time there. I don't know how to balance that, but I think it it's worth looking at again. And then, as was mentioned about the bathrooms, I think that even beyond getting the bathrooms renovated is just basic maintenance, and I believe that's a city responsibility. Perhaps we could do something about that and really take a good look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question about the unincorporated Menlo Park versus non-resident fee, and if there's any opportunity to have a different pricing.
Mayor, may I just ask to clarify? You're saying maybe of a pricing specifically for people who have a Menlo Park address but reside in the unincorporated county areas of Menlo Park?
Yes.
We certainly can take that as an item for the revisitation of the fees at at City Council if there's interest from the council to explore that. I I think we'd need to look at it in the context of the overall master fee schedule because it may have implications for fees in other areas as they may pertain to the residency status of folks who live in the unincorporated area.
Okay, thank you. And and my other question is about fees are having a a pass, like a ten-use pass versus a monthly pass? And my guess is, there's comments in in the feedback is that that's because some people buy a pass and then they use it two or three times as opposed to buying ten passes, they can, or ten visits. They can use that, use it up as over time. So, one expires and the other one doesn't.
Great suggestions. Please keep them coming.
Thank you. I think I think the majority of the suggestions are already in the staff report, so I'm pulling some things out of it and just highlighting it. And that was one of the comments. Let's see. Just a question about the staffing, and that is, with the lifeguard coverage, there are two to six, I think Mr. Sheperd stated earlier, there are two to six staff persons or lifeguards available on deck. And being open 92 hours a week, I'm just thinking about mimicking, being able to mimic that in the new pool, the same level of safety. So, I'm sure you won't have any any difficulty hiring. There was a comment in the in here about hiring, someone asked to be hired. At any rate, but just wanted to to know your, a statement you made earlier just about assessing the need over at the new pool before you have, I guess, the full run of a pool as you do with Burgess. So, just curious, just about staffing, or do you have concerns about being able to fully staff the facility? Or or are you going to use current employees and move them around from Burgess to the Bell Haven Pool? Just curious what your what your plans are.
So, our plan is to have a a Bell Haven hiring open house on April the 13th at Bell Haven on the pool deck. And we're about to announce it to the community, and we hope to get a lot of responses from community members to build a a safety team, a customer service team from from the residents, so hopefully they can walk to work. And we will always have a minimum of two guards on, but our model is set up to always have three guards on or at the facility, not necessarily on the deck. So, there's always one on deck, one on the ready, and one in the supervisory role. So, there's always a minimum of three who will respond to any rescue or extraction or anything.
Thank you. And if you have that information available, it would be great to share it with Mr. Reinhardt, considering you'll be doing a presentation to the Neighborhood Association this Thursday. They would definitely be interested in that information.
Yes, we're excited to share it on Thursday.
Thank you.
I wonder, too, given that that's 11 days from now, that I believe you said April 13th, it makes me wonder if there's more rapid-fire outreach that could be done to the nonprofits in Bell Haven, or just making sure that there are other other ways of outreach that are going to be done as well. Thank you.
I have a comment about the lifeguarding, and I actually continue to be concerned and have heard from other swimmers who are concerned about just having one lifeguard on deck during the weekdays and weekend mornings. Seems to be typically one lifeguard on deck. Oftentimes, that lifeguard is engaged by one of the swimmers, by someone in the conversation, or they have some other duties they're fulfilling. Not long, not long-term duties, but like changing cones around, things like that. It seems like it is a huge responsibility to be guarding both pools with one person. So, I understand that there are people in the office who can be signaled with a whistle, but just, it is of concern. And there's a very, there's great, great many abilities in the pool. It's wonderful to see some of the folks swimming who therapeutically, and others who are very, very competitive swimming. I think that the pool does attract a very wide variety of swimmers, which is excellent. But just one lifeguard on deck does seem concerning.
You're right. The the lifeguarding role carries a great gravitas, and there's a very big importance to the role. And we stress and restress that to all of our staff on an ongoing basis. The role of a lifeguard is to be able to respond to to an incident within 30 seconds, right? To identify something and then be out and be in action and call out for assistance with it within 30 seconds. And one lifeguard positioned in a or well-positioned on the pool and who is rescue-ready will start the emergency action procedures. That's what's necessary. And being being a lifeguard, that's what we try to, that's what we try to stress to our our all of our staff. So, that means we have constant rotations. And so, we're moving our rotations to 15 to 20 minutes to keep our staff rescue-ready. And so, they're on for 15 or 20. And so they're on for fifteen or twenty minutes where they're continually scanning all parts of the pool. And then they're off, off from scanning, but still on to be rescue-ready and at the ready. And, I mean, this is the same. Having one guard is, is the way the, the industry is, is set up, not only just at pools, that, but on, on lakes and beaches. So you need a very alert person to start the process. And then there's people who come to the aid once they are alerted.
Thank you. I believe the challenges that I observe at the pool are, first of all, that the two pools are not easy, unless you're sitting in the chair, they're not easy to keep an eye on both pools. And there are, the guards are often walking around, which, and so may not be in an optimal place to be observing both pools. So, and I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Also, I believe you are going to be using the advertising through the city email outreach and other city newsletters and all. I would encourage as much advertising to city residents as possible and really focus advertising to residents rather than beyond the city. Thank you.
So I have a question. Considering the pool, the new pool will be open before this comes back to council. So will any of this input guide the hours of operation at the new pool?
I could just ask a clarifying question. Are you referring to the feedback the council is giving now or the feedback from the survey or both?
Well, I'll start with just the feedback from the survey. Will any of that be used as for the new pool?
As far as the hours of operation?
Hours of operation, what's requested, like open swim, things like that. Will any of this, will any information from the survey be used to guide operations at the new pool? Since it'll be open in May, my assumption is this will not come to council before May, before the pool is open.
Yes, that's correct. I, I don't think that there's a plan to have a, like an in-depth study session on the Bellhaven Community Campus pool operations again before the pool opens in May. The survey information and the feedback we're getting from the study session is incredibly valuable as Mr. Sheperd and his team and the city team work together on opening the new facility and programming the pool. The, Mr. Sheperd and his team have put together a proposed schedule, which is contained in the annual report for 2024. So I think we've taken some notes on some of feedback and suggestions, in particular when it comes to the accessibility of open swim and lap swim, and of course prioritizing residents and the hours of day and when those lanes are available. And so I think that's good feedback that we can work on between now and the opening. But then I do think, and I recall Mr. Sheperd's comments earlier about the actual usage of the pool and the feedback from residents, that begins an iterative collaborative period with the pool users in the neighborhood and to evolve and develop the program from there. And please do jump in, Tim, if, if I'm missing something or not capturing accurately kind of what your thought process and approach is.
I, I think you're right on, Sean. And, and yeah, just to reiterate what we're, what we're attempting to do, and we're trying to serve the the various user groups in the community. Once we know who those user groups are and the, the volume of of the users coming in, is it going to be a lot of families? Is it going to be a lot of seniors? Is it going to be a lot of children learning how to swim? And then we'll then have to figure how to divide the pool so that we can serve those, those needs. We're going in with some, some ideas and some perceptions, but we, we want, you know, we need reality and we need data and we need numbers. And then we'll, we'll change and evolve from there.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council members? In direction? Right. I believe we have covered everything. Mr. Reinhardt, did you have any other, any other direction you needed from council?
Thank you. All of this feedback has been incredibly helpful. We're very grateful for it. If there, that's very helpful. If there are any other comments on the focus group, we just want to do a confirmation that staff is preparing to try to convene the focus group to meet potentially like monthly, have kind of a rotating membership to really talk about and give feedback to the aquatics program. So if there's, I just wanted to call that to attention before we end to see if there were any specific comments or direction or suggestions about that group and what they should focus on.
And will that group focus on one pool or on both pools?
I think the intent is for it to focus on both pools. However, obviously, the Bellhaven pool is, is very front and center in our minds right now because it's a new pool.
Okay. My only suggestion is that along with doing outreach specifically in the Bellhaven neighborhood, that you do the same type of outreach around Burgess? Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, I'm confused. When you say focus group, do you mean a ongoing working group? And who's on this? What is this?
Yes. If I may, through the mayor, I can give a little explanation. So as part of the aquatics operator agreement, one of the elements in the agreement is to convene a kind of informal focus group of residents, pool users primarily, but it wouldn't necessarily be limited to that. And they would convene about monthly with city staff. It doesn't specify a number, but maybe a dozen or so. They would review the operator's annual report. They would review, like have received monthly reports on what's happening at the pool. They would provide feedback to the operator and staff about sort of from a community grassroots perspective on the aquatics program. They could potentially even provide some additional commentary to the city council in the context of like this annual report. And it's just an opportunity to have like a regular kind of, again, an informal kind of community focus group around our aquatics programs. Just because the annual report is only once a year, and the annual surveys only once a year, it's a way to have a more real-time kind of interaction.
So who is picking the people for this group? And how do we know kind of what the cross-section is? Because, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, great. So this is one of the elements that, any feedback from the city council now or through the city manager later would be appreciated. One of the elements is for the, of membership, if you will, to, to rotate periodically. So it's kind of like any other focus group where you're like testing with different groups of people that would be like a cross-section of users and residents. And so we would endeavor to have that be a representative cross-sections that are on a rotating basis. But any specific direction from the city council would be appreciated.
Okay. Yeah, then I think the biggest thing for me with the pool is just the competing, that, as councilmember Nash said, the tension between all these different programs. So I think it'll be really important to have representatives from those different programs and then from, you know, folks who might not be as engaged in pool usage. And then to Mayor Taylor's point about engaging the youth, making sure we have some youth representation there, like young families, seniors, people with accessibility. Yeah.
Oh, thank you. And we just have, we actually have one more public comment. So I have said yes. So Deputy City Clerk Sandoval, if you could call for a public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. And to clarify, this is for a general public comment. Did you want to finish this and then we can jump into general public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt and your team, and thank you, Mr. Sheperd, for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. We'll go ahead and reopen General Public Comment, Item G. Our speaker is Larry Moody. Please approach the podium.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Menlo Park City Council members. My name is Larry Moody. I serve Job Train as their Government Affairs and Community Liaison. And I'm here to invite you to our annual Breakfast of Champions event, which is going to be May twenty-fourth at eight-thirty a.m. to ten a.m. at the San Francisco Marriott Hotel. This will be our fortieth annual Breakfast of Champions event. And Job Train, which originally began in nineteen sixty-five, has its home on twelve hundred O'Brien. And we would really encourage the Menlo Park city government and staff to consider joining us on that day by either buying a ticket or hosting a table, or just come and be a part of the festivities. Jerry Rice, who I, actually, I think lives in Menlo Park as well, will be our keynote speaker and our guest of honor. We anticipate about four hundred attendees there, and all the revenue goes towards our curriculum and training programs that we provide free of cost for all the clients that participate in our programs right here in Menlo Park. So I wanted to formally just come and introduce myself as your Government Affairs Community Liaison for any future conversations that will be occurring between our two groups, and hopefully we'll see you on May twenty-fourth. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you for your comment. And thank you, Mayor Taylor. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item K. Consent Calendar. Under the Consent Calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. Deputy City Clerk Sandoval, do we have any public comment on the Consent Calendar?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. We'll go ahead and call for public comment on Item K one, which is our only Consent Calendar item this evening, except city council meeting minutes for March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. If you are in person this evening and would like to comment on Item K one, please fill out a speaker card at the back table and return it to us at the clerk's desk. If you are joining us online, please use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. And if you're on a landline or cellphone, please press star nine now if you would like to comment on Item K one. This will be our final call for public comment on the Consent Calendar, Item K one. Seeing no hands, Mayor Taylor, please continue.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
I would be happy to move.
I will second.
Thank you. Just one moment. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Door and a second from Councilmember Nash to approve the Consent Calendar. Any further city council questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, please proceed with voting. Thank you so much. The motion passes unanimously. Mayor Taylor, please continue.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Regular Business, Item L. Under Regular Business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The Regular Business item is L one, Adopt a Resolution to Authorize the City Manager to Execute a Funding Agreement with Peninsula Clean Energy in the amount of two million, one hundred and ten thousand dollars to implement a state-funded home electrification program, allocate funds for marketing, and provide direction on workforce development. Here to introduce these items is Sustainability Manager Rachel Laundre and our Management Analyst, Ori Paz.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just pulling up our slides here. All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Once again, my name is Rachel Laundre. This is my first city council meeting, joining you all. So I appreciate the opportunity to meet, meet each of you, and I'm excited for our work together. Today, we will be talking about the Menlo Park Home Electrification Program, which is much anticipated. And I'm really excited to be joining on this great foundation of work. With me today is Ori Paz, who's been a tremendous leader on this effort. Tonight, we are recommending that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a funding agreement with Peninsula Clean Energy, or PCE, in the amount not to exceed two million, one hundred and ten thousand dollars through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, to implement a state-funded home electrification program, to allocate forty thousand dollars for enhanced outreach and marketing, and to provide direction on a potential workforce development program. I'd like to start off by sharing some background on our efforts, and then we will get into program design, outreach and community engagement activities, and options for workforce development programs. We welcome discussion and questions after our presentation. As you are aware, the independent nonprofit Menlo Spark requested four point five million dollars from the state for a home electrification program supporting priority number one of the city's climate action plan. The funds were awarded to the city, and the Environmental Quality Commission recommended collaborating with Peninsula Clean Energy to electrify as many homes in the city as possible. The city council gave direction to staff to enter an agreement with Peninsula Clean Energy to implement a direct-install, turnkey home electrification program. Since that direction, staff has been working closely with our partners at Peninsula Clean Energy to customize its existing home upgrade program for Menlo Park residents. We have been meeting regularly and would continue to collaborate through development of the program's eligibility and implementation guidelines and through monthly coordinating meetings.
Thank you. And the, the partnership with PCE really is built upon the foundation of their existing home upgrade program. So PCE currently operates a low-income whole home and minor repair electrification program for low-income, single-family homeowners within their territory. So that's San Mateo County and includes the city of Los Banos. And it's an exciting time for that program because they were awarded, they were approved for an expanded new cycle that would be implemented by Franklin Energy. And starting as soon as May twenty twenty-four, we would see additional funds allocated to that low-income program that would be the, the bedrock of the Menlo Park Home Electrification Program, as well as two additional offerings that are really exciting. Take a moment to plug them, and that is a market-rate electrification. So granting people access to contractors to do this work, as well as emergency water heater repair and so the replacement. And so those are, those are coming, but the, the exciting thing for this evening is that expanded low-income home electrification program. And so through that program, PCE is estimating that approximately forty low-income homes in Menlo Park would be electrified, which is great. And what we're proposing and what's before you this evening is a Menlo Park program that would build on that and, and enable the electrification. and enable the electrification of 40 to 60 additional homes focused in the Bell Haven neighborhood. Next slide, please. And so we've been working closely with PCE to understand what is possible for a Menlo Park program that builds upon their existing home upgrade program. And as Rachel mentioned, we would be continuing that work with PCE. You know, task one, if the resolution passes this evening, is to develop those implementation guidelines and set some of those eligibility criteria to address a lot of the direction that was received by the, from the council, by staff at the October meeting. And so we can overview a few of the key points here, and the first has to do with concurrent funding. And so the, the state funds that would be the Menlo Park program would be primarily focused on the Bell Haven neighborhood and low-income residents within that neighborhood. And the PCE funds would continue to be available for properties outside of Bell Haven. Once the state funds have been spent, then PCE funds would be used to continue to do projects within the Bell Haven neighborhood. And based on some of the preliminary estimates we've seen and the overall project budget that we've seen from Peninsula Clean Energy for this segment of their program, it does appear that there would be funds remaining at the end of the term of this agreement, which would be June 30, 2026. The next item that was discussed at the October City Council meeting had to do with age qualifications. And so PCE has clarified since that for their income-qualified programs, there is no age at which someone could participate in that program without meeting the income qualifications. And so for the Menlo Park program, we would recommend that we keep to that and be consistent with PCE's program in that any homeowner at any age would need to meet the income qualifications to participate in this income-qualified program. Where we differ slightly, where the Menlo Park program would be expanded beyond PCE's offering is what that age, or sorry, what that income threshold would be. And so in part of the earlier discussion, we talked about setting that income level consistent with PCE's income threshold of 80% of the area median income, which for a family of four is around $149,000 a year. And then part of the scope of this program would be to receive monthly reports from PCE on the number of homes that are electrified, the status of outreach and engagement. And through that, we could develop a trajectory to see how quickly we're spending the money. And it's our recommendation that if, at the point after six months, we see that we are not on track to spend the full amount of the state funding, that we expand the Menlo Park program to 120% AMI, or $210,000 a year for a family of four. And that would be unique to the Menlo Park program. And at the end of the term of this agreement, once all of the funds have been spent, or once all of the funds have been spent, whichever comes first, any of the homes that then qualify for PCE's program would need to meet PCE's requirements. So again, it would be focused and specific to the Menlo Park program. Excellent. Okay, and then continuing down, there was discussion at the council meeting in October around pausing rental participation, realizing how many peas are in this presentation. And so the staff recommendation is to be consistent with PCE's program and pause, including renter-occupied properties at this time until rental protections can be established in the city. And again, wanted to note that that is consistent with PCE's program, which at this time does not include renters and would require the city to create and maintain those eligibility lists. The next item is having to do with extensive projects. So the council directed staff to consider trying to include the most difficult-to-electrify homes within this program. In our conversations with PCE, we understand that they're developing with Franklin, their Franklin Energy, the criteria and a per-home cost cap. And so it's our recommendation that we continue to work with PCE on that and establish a higher cap for qualifying homeowners within Menlo Park, who would be participating in the Menlo Park program. So there would be a cap, but it would be higher than the PCE cap. And then finally, I'm excited to note that the program would include the development and publish of one to two case studies per year by PCE. And I can turn it to Rachel to talk more about outreach.
Thank you, Ori. Outreach and community engagement are a critical part of the success of this program. PCE will be conducting territory-wide outreach for its program, and will use $60,000 from the proposed funding agreement to increase outreach and marketing efforts in Bell Haven. These additional funds will enable PCE to reach residents through direct mail, email, social media, and paid digital ads. PCE plans to provide Menlo Park versions of their marketing materials, including materials with the city's logo and brand elements. PCE is also in the process of contracting with the community-based organization, Climate Resilient Communities, for canvassing and grassroots outreach, and we're really excited that our work with PCE is enabling richer engagement with CRC. The city has the opportunity to amplify PCE's efforts, and staff recommend allocating $40,000 to contract with a strategic communications consultant to develop and deliver a Spanish and English bilingual campaign in Bell Haven. The intention of the city-led marketing program is to develop messages that reflect the uniqueness of Menlo Park's programs, all of those facets that Ori just walked us through, including the different income eligibility thresholds, the increased repair limits, and the urgency of our funding, as well as messages that really resonate with Bell Haven community members and homeowners. Additionally, the $40,000 would enable us to create and print any marketing materials needed that PCE does not intend to create, such as press release, bilingual copy, banner and poster-sized graphics, as well as identify channels to deliver these messages, including community-based organizations, local community hubs, events, news outlets, as we heard earlier with the pool item, our commissions and youth commission. We also recognize that word of mouth is a valuable marketing tool, and we heard from the council in October, a creative idea around referrals. And so we've budgeted some funds in case we would like to develop a referral bonus program to incentivize participating homeowners to advertise the program within their networks. In addition to completing home upgrades and engaging the community, Menlo Spark, who I mentioned earlier in the presentation, identified a need to develop a specialized workforce as part of the roadmap to electrify homes. So kind of the bigger picture of how we're gonna meet our cap one target. During the October 10 City Council meeting, the City Council directed staff to reserve $100,000 for a city-led workforce development program in case another source of funding did not emerge. No additional funding has been identified since that time. And such a workforce development program is not in Peninsula Clean Energy's plans or in Franklin Energy's plan, and would be completely outside of the scope of this funding agreement that we've proposed today. So we're seeking direction on how to proceed with that $100,000 as it's, as it's separate right now from the PCE funding agreement, as well as the remainder of the program. So the three options that we have on the slide here and have discussed in the staff report are having the City Council direct staff to create a competitive workforce development grant program in line with our procurement policies, calling on community-based organizations to develop and run a workforce development program. This would include staff time to develop the solicitation, to go through the selection and contracting processes, while as managing the agreement with the community-based organization. The second option we have is reevaluating the need for a workforce development program at the grant's midway point, or at another point deemed appropriate. And a final option would be reallocating the $100,000 to the PCE funding agreement to support additional home upgrades. And so as we conclude our presentation, staff recommends that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute a funding agreement with Peninsula Clean Energy, or PCE, in the amount not to exceed $2,110,000 through June 30, 2026, to implement a state-funded home electrification program, allocate $40,000 for enhanced outreach and marketing, and provide direction on a potential workforce development program. Thank you, Council. And before transitioning to our discussion, I want to introduce Alejandro Posada, Program Manager at Peninsula Clean Energy, who is joining us today in person. And that concludes our presentation for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation and the introduction. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to you as well. Are there any clarifying questions from council members before we take public comment? All right. Deputy City Clerk Sandoval, will you take public comment, please?
Gladly. Okay, we are now accepting public comment for item L1. Adopt a Resolution to Authorize the City Manager to Execute a Funding Agreement with Peninsula Clean Energy in the Amount of $2,110,000 to Implement a State-Funded Home Electrification Program, Allocate Funds for Marketing, and Provide Direction on Workforce Development. For anyone in chambers with us this evening, you can fill out a speaker card at the back table and return it to us here at the clerk desk. If you are joining us online, you can use the raise hand speak, raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Or if you are calling in from a landline or cellphone, you can press a star nine. Right now, Mayor Taylor, I have three hands total. And we'll go ahead with our first speaker, who is Brian Schmidt.
Good evening, Council. Brian Schmidt, Executive Director for Menlo Spark. And we support the staff recommendation. Would like to see this project move forward. And this has been a long time coming, as you all know, with so many people involved with this. And I want to start by thanking staff for mentioning Menlo Spark's role in this. I'm very proud of the role, even though I personally had nothing to do with it. It's all my predecessor's fault. But it's, it's great to see this happen, the amazing effort by Senator Becker, California Energy Commission, and City Council staff, those present and former staff, and the council itself. So this is a great thing to have happen here. From Menlo Spark's perspective, we see this as something that we want to be, have continued involvement with. It's not done by our perspective, by any imagination. It's great that we're starting very soon. We might be able to actually get installations in time to help people for the summer heat and get some climate resilience this summer out of this project, which is really exciting. And ideally, I'd like to see so many sign-ups in those first six months that Rachel mentioned, that we can go back to the legislature, to Senator Becker, and say, this was great. Let's start working on this again in the 2025 legislative session. And then part of our continued involvement with this includes workforce development. It seems clear that there's still some contractor hesitation in switching over to heat pumps and showing that there's a workforce out there to help them, I think, is really crucial to that. Menlo Spark has done a great deal of work on this, and we've been happy to be in touch with staff on the work that's been done, done to date. And I'm just glad to see Job Train here today. I won't steal your thunder. But they're, they're already on the job at Job Train, working on this, expanding their curriculum to deal with this issue. And I think there's a lot more that can be done. So we do support the, using that $100,000 for workforce development. Staff laid out three different options at the end. We would suggest doing some version of the first option, which is get things done now. Don't sit on the money and wait for it to happen later. And we do need, do need to work on this workforce. If it's either competitive grant process or some other process to try and get that, get that training out there. Job Train's first cohort is going to graduate in June. Menlo Spark has been working on a potential paid apprenticeship program that'll help encourage the contractors to get into this work, doing work in Menlo Park in Bell Haven. And we'd like to be able to see an opportunity to do that this summer. And then there'll be another cohort and another cohort after that. $100,000 isn't a lot, but it can get things going, something we definitely need to have happen. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Larry Moody, followed by Pam Jones.
Good evening, Council. So believe it or not, that was not a scripted promotion from Brian, right? But we do support the recommendation that's coming before the council on this project. You know, it's interesting, Job Train is the organization that is always thinking about workforce development, always thinking about creating a pathway for our clients to really get a skill set that is in alignment with the growth that is occurring here in the Peninsula communities and certainly in the Bay Area. We really endorse Menlo Sparks in the work that they have done. We support the Peninsula Clean Energy Group. I fortunately, I had the good fortune of being a part of the initial pilot program when we began, I think it was like six to eight years ago. And believe me, many of us as electors were in the room just trying to figure out this thing of clean energy. And Menlo Sparks was a lead advocate and mentor for many of us that are in the room. So I really want to lift them up and celebrate the fact that we are here today with a strong partnership with the city of Menlo Park, moving this clean energy initiative forward. When we began eight years ago, it was all about our sons and daughters, our next generation. What type of climate did we want to leave for them? And Menlo Park has always provided clear leadership. One of the things I will say about the $100,000 is that oftentimes, when we begin thinking about outreach in our communities, and certainly our Bell Haven community, don't lose sight of the faith community and the impact that they have in reaching those residents who are most able to benefit from programs like this, right? Many of our longstanding Bell Haven residents may not have their first reaction towards technology, right? Or to websites, or looking at flyers, right? But it's important that we find that community where they gather, right? And that means empowering the local leaderships in that Bell Haven community to be a part of this conversation and making sure that the outreach is getting to the places where it really needs to be heard, and give those community residents an opportunity to really participate in this discussion, not only beginning now, but going forward. All right, and thank you once again. I firmly endorse the recommendation that staff is bringing forward. And Job Train is looking forward to playing a key role in the workforce development conversation going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And our next speaker is going to be Pam Jones, followed by Adina.
Good evening, Pam Jones, resident of the Bell Haven neighborhood. I appreciate the work that the staff has done on this report. I do have a couple of things, questions. One of them was about Job Train, because I was unable to see it anywhere in this document, so it looked like workforce development was going to be run by Sparks. I think that if you're going to use Job Train, it must be specifically stated there. There were some other things. People were concerned about having contractors in their house and city inspectors and noticing that there's something in the house that was not, that was not properly permitted. And that is a concern, because you can be putting in a stove and a refrigerator, and the person has remodeled the rest of their kitchen, and now, you know, what happens at that point? So there's nothing in there that is going to protect the resident. There's, when we talk about the application process, it would be nice to see what the application is before we even enter into an agreement. And to note whether or not that, although, of course, it's going to include the income from any rent that's related to the house, that if you're living in your house and you're renting rooms or a portion of your house, you count that rental income. But do you have to count the income that your tenants are making just because they are physically in the house? So that needs to be clarified. And I have another thing here. Okay. So the other thing is, who was at the table making all these, all the agreements, you know? Was there anybody from the Bell Haven neighborhood? Because I remember that when there was conversations, that residents here did have, they did have concerns, and they did have concerns, and they brought those up. So to make sure that the community knows that everything that was a concern is included, it would be a shame to approve this agreement before we know what the residents in the, in the community, how they're feeling. So it's kind of like, you're going to do that afterwards? It's a little late afterwards, because we already have that agreement. I do want to thank you for making, giving clarity on the bifurcated programs with PCE. And that is very helpful. And I'm out of time. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And our final speaker will be Adina. Adina, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, this is Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident. And I wanted to echo and add a little bit of variation to some of the previous comments. First of all, really glad to see this program moving forward based on so many years of work by community members and, you know, EQC and Menlo Spark, people in the Bell Haven community participating in, you know, the direction of the program. And that leads me to my first question, which is building on what Pam Jones said. I believe that earlier on, there was intended to be some kind of community advisory group on this program. And I did not hear that mentioned anywhere in the staff report. So would love to hear about where that went and if there's an opportunity to continue to have such a thing. And then the second part is about the job training component. And I do agree that moving forward and using the money seems like a good idea, given the, you know, mentioned just by word of mouth that there's continuing to be a shortage of people who are trained and willing to do this kind of work. But with that, I am completely perplexed and befuddled as to why we did not hear from PCE and the contractor that they are seeing a need for this. And it seems also perplexing and befuddling that it would be the city of Menlo Park's role to catalyze a job training program for something that seems to have like a massive need for our county and region and state. And so if the city council is interested in asking a little bit of inquiry as to, like, why is this falling on the city? And is there an opportunity going forward to find a larger host for this thing, which is an overall presumably tremendous need that will have a larger home than the city of Menlo Park? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. This will be our final call for public comment on item L1. That is all of our hands. Mayor Taylor, please continue.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for your public comment. Bringing it back to the dais to see if there are any questions or concerns from city council members at this time. Councilmember Willison.
Thank you for this information. It is really exciting to be so close. I know we've been wanting to do this for a while. I, Ms. Levin, actually, her final question was what has been nagging in my head about the workforce development? Because we're contracting with PCE to kind of not take on program development city, in our city, and to utilize our resources effectively. And I am confused what PCE's strategy is with this. And so they've hired this Franklin Group, who's hiring subcontractors. I just don't understand how all these pieces fit together with this $100,000 workforce development. So if, if either, if you can address that, or if PCE wants to talk about that, that'd be really helpful.
Mayor, would now be an appropriate time.
Yes, thank you.
I'll start. I know, you know, with some of the history of it, Menlo Spark not only, you know, advocates in Menlo Park, but for our larger region. And so they've identified barriers across San Mateo County and the Bay Area for electrification. And much of their work is to advance, you know, fossil-free buildings in the city and in our neighboring jurisdictions. So workforce development efforts here benefiting the larger county, that fits into their vision and scope. As we bring it home to Menlo Park, we've been thinking about the program and how it can benefit Bell Haven residents who are interested in entering the workforce as building efficiency professionals, electrification contractors. And so this $100,000 specifically would be allocated, you know, through our grant program. But in our, in our grant guidelines, we would specify that we are targeting Menlo Park residents for participation in workforce development programs. And so that funding would, would benefit residents. But I can let Alejandro share more about PCE's strategies and plans for workforce development.
That'd be great. Actually, you made me think of like a follow-up question for you to, or for PCE to consider as you think about answering this, is like, in the absence of us ceding this $100,000 for workforce development, will there be an issue? I, I understand the desire to build up the Bell Haven community and to offer them jobs, and that's beautiful. And right now, we're looking at just getting this program up and running. Almost, there, to me, they're almost two separate topics. And so I'm just curious, if we don't do this, is there going to be a shortage of installers and qualified people to do the work of electrifying the Bell Haven community?
I'll follow up on that point before PCE shares their strategy. There would, there would not be a shortage. PCE's contractor, Franklin, has three subconsultants who are, through their agreement, able to take on the load of homes that we would need to be electrified. And we would not anticipate the workforce development, you know, providing any apprenticeships or employment for Menlo Park residents to those three subconsultants or Franklin Energy. It'd be a separate pilot.
Hi, councilmembers. Oh, this is on. Okay. All right, great. Alejandro Posada, I'm a Program Manager with Menlo Clean Energy. Thank you. And I oversee our building electrification efforts, including our home upgrade program and our rebates and loan programs and so on for residents in San Mateo County. So just to talk a bit more about our approach to our, like, turnkey electrification program or home upgrade, it's, you know, to be determined what we're going to call it, since we are kind of expanding its scope. But to refer to it as home upgrade, we are planning on just engaging with three contractors. That's not to say that there aren't other contractors that are doing electrification in the county. We do have rebate and loan programs that will continue to operate outside of this direct install program. So residents can definitely work with any contractor they want. And, you know, I've been at PCE for six years and have worked on our building programs for the past three years or so. And I have seen a lot of growth in the amount of contractors that are working on electrification projects in that time. So just in our loan program alone, because we do require contractors to enroll, we have like nearly 50 contractors across the county that are, you know, doing either heat pump butter heaters, or heat pump HVAC, or spacing heating equipment. So we do not have plans to do any workforce training or any workforce-specific program at the time. Our focus has really been on, you know, providing incentives and also, like, resident support, either with helping them, you know, streamline their experience in electrifying or with concierge support and so on. But we don't have any plans to do any contractor-specific training. But we do, you know, allow any, and all contractors to enroll in some of the programs that we have, like a rebate and our loan programs.
Thank you for the information. Are there any follow-up questions regarding PCE? Councilmember Dorr.
Yes, one second. I'm gathering my thoughts here. So it, this is related, but it actually might be more for the city staff on this. So in that case, if PCE is not exploring a workforce development program at this time, neither is Franklin Energy or the other subcontractors, does that mean that if we were to earmark $100,000 towards workforce development, that would need to go through a city-managed RFP process? Could you explain a little bit more about what that would look like?
Yes, that's correct. We haven't yet developed what the solicitation guidelines would look like, but we would need to put out a call, a request for proposals. We would have to, you know, come up with a grant description, and we would have to have it open for 30 days. We would receive applications. We would create our scoring system. And then we could go through our review of the applications, interviews, vendor selection, and then get into contracting.
That's, I'm curious if you have an estimate of, how much time does that process take when we've done subcontracting like this before, or, not subcontracting, sorry, RFP processes before?
Yeah, I'm curious, since I'm new here, if I could get, phone a friend with the deputy city manager, with the city manager on, kind of pass process here. Maybe even the city attorney could weigh in as she provided initial guidance for this effort.
Welcome, Mr. Stoltay.
Thank you. I'm happy to weigh in a little bit. I think it would take us at least a month, probably, to develop the grant guidelines. And then to release the call for proposals and solicit at least three bids, you know, that would be our goal. That would probably take another month. So we're talking at least, you know, a two-month process, probably, to, to reach a selection point.
Thank you. And so that also means that it wouldn't necessarily guarantee that the work that it seems like has already been started with Menlo Spark and Job Train would necessarily be the one that is selected, because there needs to be, as a city process, a competitive system in the RFP process.
Correct. We would still have to go through a bidding process, yeah.
And just to follow up, so we can ask all our questions about this concept. Let's just say we did that. We did the RFP. It was awarded to a particular provider. How would that even dovetail with the PCE program that we are partnering on? Like, how would you use that in, in the, in what we're doing?
The workforce development. The workforce development program would not support the direct electrification of homes through this funding. Through the state, it would be more like a pilot program. Since we have the funding opportunity to advance home electrification, we could explore this piece of the puzzle with the $100,000, but it would not result in any additional homes upgraded.
Thank you. Another question. I know there are some organizations like Grid Alternatives, where they have homeowners involved in the process of installing solar panels on their house, for example, to buy, to create buy-in and understanding of the systems and train folks up. And I'm curious if there, I know that you've just selected Franklin Energy, but if there's any plans or with the subcontractors from there to involve residents in understanding the equipment that is being installed and how to take care of it and things like that. Will, will there be not workforce development, but at least some kind of professional system development so people can understand what is installed in their homes?
Definitely, as part of like the, after the installation process, we do intend that the residents are educated on how to use the equipment, operate the equipment, and make sure that they, you know, get all the manuals that come with the equipment and just general information from the contractors that are installing it, so they know how to operate it and, you know, any differences between the equipment that they replaced. But that would really just largely be like the residents that participate in the program. There's no, like, separate effort to go out and do education on equipment or anything like that, or any sort of involvement in getting residents to install anything. That's not part of the plan at all.
Thank you. But it's good to know that there, of course, will be some kind of training up of the residents who have the equipment installed. Thank you.
Councilmember Willison.
Yeah, just to close the loop on this particular topic of tonight's item. I am a huge fan of Menlo Spark. I really appreciate the work that they did to get this money for our community. And I'm also a huge fan of Job Train. These are great organizations doing really good work. I just, I'm concerned that this is like, gonna take away resources from electrifying. I think it's a worthy effort. I just, at this point, don't see the city kind of getting into this business. But that's, that's my opinion, and I say that knowing I'm disappointing some folks, because we'd like to say yes to everything. But I think we have to be stewards of our staff's time and our other priorities and making sure we don't take on too much, that we are kind of spreading ourselves too thin. So I, just to let my colleagues know, on this workforce development piece, I'm fine with, I think there was like a wait-and-see option when the second half of the money comes in. I'd definitely be open to that, to revisiting it. But at this time, I wouldn't be in support of that money going to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willison. Councilmember Dorr?
Yes, I want to echo my appreciation for Job Train and for Menlo Spark. I was just, just recently learned more about the program and the partnership you are already developing, that you have cohorts that's with 15 graduates of a building maintenance program that is coming up. And that is so exciting to hear, and I wish I'd known about it sooner than now. I think I share and hope to, let's revisit this at the second part of the funding, given the current subcontractors and where things are going there. It seems like, I'd love us to revisit that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few questions going back to the public comment, because just looking through the staff report about protections for the residents that are participating in the program. And I believe the comment was just about having the community as a part of the conversation. And I know at some point, when the initial conversation started about what this would actually look like, and this was before the money was even received. And so, and I know that there were residents participating in that conversation with the previous leadership, with Menlo Sparks, and I believe a few of the EQC members. So what happened to that voice? My concern is that residents are not a part of creating what they're supposed to receive. So what happened to that voice? Or is it still there, and it's just not in the staff report?
Yeah, thank you for elevating that. I want to check in with Ori to see if you have more context on, on that resident committee. Otherwise, I can offer that this program has been brought to the EQC, and we continue to provide updates to the EQC where members of the public attend. I know that's not the structure that the public comment or you are referring to. But I, but I just wanted to offer that as well. And I think if there's, have an interest to bring up that Citizens Advisory Committee, I'd like to hear more direction on that and what, what that looks like as we move forward. But I just want to give Ori an opportunity in case there's anything to add there.
Nothing to add there, but I see Stevens on, so if he has something to add, I'll turn to him.
I would say that I'm not aware of a former community advisory committee. However, all of the information that has flowed to us through the EQC, through public comment, through the city council direction, we've incorporated into the current outline of the program with PCE. And would just want to reiterate that this is just the first half of the funding, and we do need to spend the full 4.5 in two years. So we're on a very quick timeline. So I just want to underscore how quickly we really do have to move to start implementing.
Thank you. So when does the clock start? The six months, does that start from today? Six months from this date, because I know there was mention about six months. We need to do X first before we look at expanding to other income brackets.
Yes, so the, the first task, first order of business is to establish the implementation guidelines. And so we can take feedback and direction from, from this meeting if there are additional things to include. And then it would be six months from program launch. So we're trying to align with the PCE-targeted launch date of May 2024. And maybe I can turn to Alejandro for a little bit more context on that.
Yeah, yeah, because I can, I can clarify that. So we are... So we are intending to do a soft launch at the end of May. And that's because we have been running a home upgrade program that has been doing electrification throughout the county in income qualified residence homes. And for the past six months or so, that program has actually been closed. So we've had a waitlist up. We did an RFP process, that's how we selected Franklin Energy, which is a different vendor than we, who we have been working with for the past like two and a half years. So there currently is a gap in the, like, first version of the program to the next iteration that we're hoping to soft launch in May. So when I say soft launch, I mean that we're just going to be contacting the waitlist folks first. So we are not going to be doing any marketing for the program, really across the board, like across the territory, probably like not until well into like late summer. Maybe like August or so, just because we are going to be prioritizing reaching out to the waitlist first. Likely, you know, there's a lot of Menlo Park residents that are on that waitlist. But we just want to make sure that we contact those first before we start just marketing the program, before reaching out to those that have been waiting to be served. So I would, I would suggest like that the six months on, you know, making a decision whether the city wishes to move from 80% AMI to 120 and, you know, changing the eligibility criteria be from the time that we actually start marketing the program, not from the time that we just start contacting folks on the waitlist. So that wouldn't be until like late summer. I don't have an exact date, but that would be my suggestion, not from the time that we just start going out and serving homes, because that doesn't mean we're really actively marketing the program.
Thank you for that information. And do you have a rough number for how many Menlo Park residents are on your waitlist?
That's a good question. Unfortunately, I don't. I know it's about 100 residents total. I don't know off the top of my head how many are Menlo Park residents.
Okay, that, that would be helpful to have, because that would actually help me provide additional feedback regarding the AMI. My concern is that since the Bellhaven neighborhood is majority renters, roughly 70% that are facing increased utilities costs like everyone else, that's not the population that's going to be served by this electrification. And then also just looking at utilities increase from PG&E to water to garbage. Also, the fact that I don't think that there's a focus around solar and backup batteries. So that's not a focus of this program, is my understanding, or maybe it is?
Not at this time, but that is something that we, the contract with Franklin is three years and that is something that we will be looking at, like at some point this year. It's like how to incorporate some eligibility guidelines for which residents might get solar and battery storage, but not at, like right at launch, the focus will be electrification.
Okay, and that's why I'm expressing my concerns about the majority of the neighborhood in need, along with the homeowners, are the ones that are going to have the highest costs. So, which to me, as far as when it comes to rent protections, the big benefit of having rent protections, but we don't. So I'm just thinking about the, the folks that are in need too. And then also, it would be good information, which I'm sure the city may already have, as far as what other areas of the city have an AMI of 80% or less. Because it's not just one neighborhood, this would be my thought around that. So it'd be helpful to have that information. You mentioned a strategic communities consultant, communications consultant. And I'm not sure who that is. Actually haven't heard of it. And so I'm, I'm a big advocate of community-based organizations, not a nonprofit, because they are different, something that's rooted in the neighborhood. There is an existing climate communities team, that is not the full name, it is CCC Team, where I think you can get a lot of information. Whatever the baseline is for if you haven't reached X amount of residents by your six-month date, you should be asking yourself why? Because they do exist, as opposed to just opening it up to another, another tier of residents. Like, look at what you're doing or maybe what you're not doing. Tapping into existing groups to me is going to be the most helpful. So I don't know who your strategic communications, but paying them $40,000 to do something and then paying the people that's providing the information, nothing? I have a problem with that. Because that's already happening. What other concerns do I have? The application, it would be extremely helpful to see the application. I know that Franklin Energy has already done a few homes in the neighborhood. So I'm not sure if they're reaching out to those folks to talk about what their experiences are, because you already have a natural voice in the neighborhood for that. But it would be great to see what an application looks like. Is it three pages? Is it 30 pages? Really concerned just about impact on residents that need to provide X amount of documents because the same issues came up, but I believe Habitat for Humanities. And just what they were requiring people to provide was above and beyond. And so some folks did not participate in the program because of it. It wasn't necessarily because they didn't qualify. It was the expectations. So it would be helpful to at least see the application. And then also, I'm sure that you will help folks with the application process. And is it online only? Is it hard copy only? And that information will be helpful.
So we're currently in the process and started a few weeks ago of like the program design and setup with Franklin Energy. So we don't have a copy of the application at this point. That's what we're working through right now, because the program, you know, will essentially be relaunched with a whole new partner. So we don't have any of these existing like processes. But I can speak to how like the customer journey will look like. So there will be, in terms of like intakes, how a resident can come in to learn about the program, there will be both a phone line and also an online form. As Rachel mentioned, we do plan to contract with Climate Resilient Communities, which is a nonprofit, you know, that's really active in the region, to do some on-the-ground outreach, like door-to-door canvassing and stuff like that, to reach harder-reach customers in addition to, you know, just the marketing, overall marketing for the program that we'll do. So some residents may also learn about it that way, like just through the canvassing that CRC will do for the program. So CRC would help them enroll if that's how they learn about it. If a resident learned about it, you know, through an email or direct mail, they can either call our line, which would go to Franklin, or fill out a form. The initial intake form is intended to be simple. So just like, you know, basic information like name, address, are you a homeowner? Like confirming that it's a single-family home, things like that. And it also will be a place where the resident can right away schedule an appointment. Because how all of this begins is actually with a site assessment, like an in-person home assessment that a Franklin employee will do. And that site assessment will, you know, determine like what exact scope of work, like what exact equipment is being offered to the homeowner. But that will be done by Franklin Energy, not the contractors. So if a customer were to fill it out online, they can schedule that appointment directly through that form is, you know, the plan that we're currently planning to take. If they call in, then they can also, you know, speak to someone on the Franklin side to help them schedule an appointment. And again, if they learn about it through like a partner like CRC, they can help them enroll. Once the site assessment takes place, during that site assessment, you know, the, the site assessor will be collecting information about the home and all of that and that will help them inform like what electrification, you know, is feasible and all of that in the exact scope. It'll be presented to the homeowner right on-site, like at the time that the site assessment is happening. And any income documentation that's required to verify that they're income qualified would be collected at that time. Something that we have used in the current phase of the program is allowing categorical eligibility. So although the program is income qualified, they don't necessarily need to provide like income documents, like tax returns and so on. If they can just show proof that they are currently enrolled in like another income qualified program, such as CalFresh and there's, there's a list. But if they're already like enrolled in an, in an income qualified program, then they can just provide proof that they are enrolled and that would on its own qualify them. But if they don't have that, then, you know, income documents such as like tax returns or pay stubs and that kind of stuff would be required just to make sure that they meet the income guidelines. And then, you know, if they choose to move forward with installation, then they, the, the installation would be scheduled with the contractor and the contractor, all they're doing is going out there and actually installing the equipment that Franklin, you know, decides. So that's sort of what it would look like from beginning to end. So there's an intake at the start, but really when the customer decides whether they are moving forward or not is at the site assessment, which is taking place in their home.
Thank you for the information. I didn't know if you had a question. You sure? Okay. Councilmember Dorr?
Thank you. This is a fun conversation for me and I'll tell you why. As a consultant in my previous work position, I helped the Salt River Project, which is a utility that serves a million people, think about their energy efficiency programs for small businesses. And they were doing a very similar process to what you just described of trying to figure out, how do you do their outreach? How do you do referrals? How do you actually install the equipment? How do you do the energy audits? And so I'm really excited that we are doing this and that we are pursuing this for our own community. So really excited to hear this. Some things that I learned in that process with that major utility was that, one, I'm so glad we have the funds for referrals, because word of mouth is the most important way to get people interested and involved in this process. People who have had something installed, who can then vouch for the program. What I found in, in my previous work that I wonder might happen here, folks might think it's too good to be true, that this is somehow a scam. What are you trying to get out and take from me in this process? So having ways through the communication to emphasize the legitimacy of this, through the referrals and the from other folks, being able to share back. Connections to churches and faith communities will be so important. Also, some other things that I would love to, I'm sure you all are thinking about, is thinking about putting the resources in Spanish, not just in English, so folks can, can access it online or, and hard copy as well. Also, making sure that any language that is used is really approachable. So a site assessment might sound scary, but an energy audit might be language that's more familiar. I really appreciate Mayor Taylor for you raising the importance of reaching renters. That 70% of residents are renters in Bellhaven. I didn't realize that. And I think that's a really important thing for us to think about as we think about who are we reaching? And are we actually reaching the folks that can most benefit from lower energy bills? And so that's something that I would, I'd like to still push on and see us see, how can we access those people? And is there a way through Franklin Energy that there's more outreach directly to the landlords about the installation? So they understand there is no cost to them to do this and that their renters will benefit. I, I don't know, but would love to see some more continued push and searching there to see if there are creative options to support renters. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm, as everyone else is very excited about this program, I think the biggest thing that we need to do at this point is get it off the ground and get moving. So with that in mind, I am interested in delaying any decision on the workforce development. I do not think that we should try and divert any resources to that at this point, although as everyone has said, it's a very worthwhile endeavor. In the contract, I would like to consider having some clause, if it's not there already, that if a person sells their house that has been with the energy upgrades, if they sell their house within a certain period of time, that, I don't know if they have to repay the funding or whatever, but just so we don't get people who might intentionally flip a house, get this upgrade and then flip a house. Just some, something there. Also, there was a question before that I think has not yet been answered. And that is, what if as the city is inspecting, there is some other upgrades, something that is not quite up to code is found or something that was done without a permit? How will the city handle that? And is there anything we can do to defer, waive, grant amnesty, anything like that?
If I may, on, on the first piece, and I saw Stephen join up for the second. So for the clause around selling a house, I believe you're referring to maybe language that was developed for the Habitat agreements. And we have the opportunity when creating the participation agreements, Alejandra's kind of explaining that process of signing agreements. We're going to have a separate Menlo Park agreement and we'll be able to include that language there. So thank you for that, that recommendation. We did hear it from October 10th and neglected to put in the staff report. As at far as inspection goes, Stephen, did you want to speak on that or do you want me to elaborate?
Sure. What I can say is that our inspectors are very much focused on safety. So they will go out to inspect the electrification measures. That's what they're there for, that's what they're focused on. But if there is anything related to safety, that, that, that would be something extra that maybe would, that would grab their attention. But we're, we're really just sending inspectors out just to inspect the electrification measures, unless they really notice something that's a dangerous situation.
Is it something that could be included within the, potentially, within the home electrification project to resolve any safety issues? And I don't know that you can answer it right now, but certainly I would hope that that might be something that could be covered if it's truly a safety issue.
Rachel, I don't know if you want to take this one and maybe talk about other minor home repairs and, and other things that may be covered with the funding that might relate here.
Yeah, absolutely. So if it's a safety issue, that's relative to the electrification, like there's something wrong with the panel or there's exposed wiring, that would certainly be a part of the scope to upgrade with the home and especially in the Menlo Park program where we're enabling additional minor and even some, some major type home repairs. If the safety issue is something like, I don't know, an unpermitted staircase or something that doesn't relate to the energy upgrades, I'm, I'm not sure how we would approach that within this program. Just to, just to be transparent, that would I think be an additional conversation with, with our community development team.
That makes sense. Thank you. And then how, what is the plan for feedback on this program? I think that it would be really helpful to hear how it's going. I don't know if it's, it can be very informal, but just whether we actually are hitting the numbers that we're hoping for or whether we need to somehow make some tweaks to the program, try and get more communication out. Just from a council and I think public perspective, it would be great to get regular feedback, very, very high level to not put more work on you, but just to hear how the program's going.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll be meeting with Peninsula Clean Energy monthly and receiving monthly reports on program metrics and success. It would be good to clarify with PCE if there's going to be a customer satisfaction survey or anything that we can kind of share within those reports to give some more community input on how the process is going. But we can certainly provide those as informational items to the council if, if monthly is interesting or quarterly or at another frequency.
Just to add on to the surveys, we do intend to collect surveys and that will be PC directly. So we wanted that to be administered by ourselves instead of Franklin. Typically, what we do across other programs, and I think what we would employ here just to be consistent with other programs, is we do a one-month survey focused on the experience of going through the, the program and satisfaction, you know, with the process, contractors, partners, all of that. That would be the focus of the one-month survey and then six-month surveys. And then we would do a second six-month survey and typically that's focused on more of the equipment that was installed. This is currently what we do, you know, with our rebate and loan programs, like just asking, you know, how their experience has been with the water heater, the HVAC unit, all of that, since they've had some time to actually experience it. So we would employ the same strategy in this program.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I just wanted to go back to, and I don't think this question has been asked, but with the amount of funding that we were initially starting with, what's the cap per household?
We currently don't have a cap per household. The PCE program has a cap per household.
We haven't defined ours either, yeah.
They haven't defined it yet. The first step in, in working with PCE is to create those implementation guidelines in task one. And so that's where we would determine what the cap per household would be. We'd probably look at, you know, what the, the average costs of the home repairs have been and then looking at, you know, going 100% above, 150% above that. We're guessing these upgrades would, and we're kind of budgeting, projecting that they would be around $30,000 to $53,000 per home. But we would certainly establish a cap and communicate that.
That's, that's good to hear. If in, if it's possible to include in the monthly reporting, that if there's any that if there's any, and I know that this isn't going to happen, if there are any safety concerns because you've reached the cap and there's additional work that needs to be done, that that would be something you would share? So it's possible for other organizations to actually partner to do the repairs, the safety repairs?
Absolutely. And Peninsula Clean Energy has shared that they do provide information to homeowners about complementary programs through Habitat Rebuilding Together. However, they don't go as far as making the connection. It's more leaving a flyer and sharing that that resource is available.
There's one other piece that I want to address too. And that is, and this is just feedback from some previous work that's been done, is if it's possible through the community-based organization, whether it's CRC, that there's a liaison that works with the resident. So it's not just the resident and the contractor. I know that for some of our elder residents, it is a stressful process. So it's helpful to have someone else in the room that's like an advocate for you, that can help you with things that come up, because things come up in these types of programs, unexpected things. So if that's possible, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dorr? Councilmember Willison?
Thank you. Two quick things. One is I'm excited about the case studies. I think to hopefully enable Menlo Spark to go back to this legislature for even more funding, I think it'll be important to not just have the survey results, but really to explain what, how the process is going. And then secondly, just I was thinking about the grand opening of the new Bellhaven Community Campus. You probably are already thinking about this, but we're looking at marketing, and the timing seems really ideal to, you know, make sure there's like a booth there, really grabbing the attention of the folks coming into the new community campus. Thanks. And then I love Mayor Taylor's idea of kind of this concierge person to help people shepherd them or coach them. So I don't know, I mean, I'd even be willing to put a little money that or just make sure that there's someone available to help guide them, but thanks.
Councilmember Nash?
If Menlo Spark goes out to Senator Becker, again, please involve staff and council with that decision prior to going out. Thank you.
I am just checking in, Mr. Paz, to see if the council has followed up on all of the staff's questions, if there was anything that we missed in the staff report.
So I think the key question remaining is direction on workforce development. And then a motion or some decision on the resolution itself is still outstanding. And then we did include a proposed outreach and marketing plan outline. We, I think we've, we've heard some interest in that that's Attachment B. But if there's questions regarding that attachment, we can talk through those before moving to motions.
Okay. Thank you. And at this time, I am stating that I am on the job train board and do not have an opinion at this time about the workforce development. So, and it sounds like based on what Councilmember Nash, Dorr, and Willison said, that you're not in support of doing the workforce development at this time?
Vice Mayor Combs?
Okay. So we've covered that part, so now we need to look at Attachment B. Ken, is it, I know it's long, so I was going to ask you to put it up on the screen, but.
Oh, certainly.
That would be.
A question as we sort of look through the marketing plan, and this could have been in the staff report, and I missed it. But have we done an analysis about how large this population is of people who would qualify? So both, again, if we look at just the funds that are going to be focused on Bellhaven, if we factor in what the mayor said, that, you know, 30% are owner-occupied there, and then you overlay the income guidelines, like, has there been an analysis of how many homes would actually meet the qualifications as part of like, you know, then doing the marketing plan? Like understanding what, you know, how big your target audience is?
Yes, this was discussed during the October 10th meeting, which led to the discussion around increasing the AMI. And so I'm just pulling up the details on that. But as far as kind of initial analysis, we have an estimated 751 owner-occupied homes in Bellhaven that are single-family. And then based on PCE's prior program uptake and income, I think in the October staff report, we had outlined 90 homes readily being qualified at the 80% AMI threshold. Just pulling that up.
And at 120, how many more did I get you?
I'm not sure. Let me see if Ori has that number.
I think it's.
So if we, and I, again, I'm pretty sure not asking you guys to pull it, you know. But if we stick with the 80, then based on the analysis of what that population is, we need essentially one every two qualified homes to sign up for this, to, in theory, exhaust the funds that we have.
Correct.
Thank you. Thanks for showing the outreach and marketing budget. That makes sense to me. Along with the ask for the resolution here of authorizing the execution of funding agreement, is this also a moment to continue talking about the program design and the opportunities on that? Or is that already kind of set here?
So there's certain limitations to the program design as a part of PCE's home upgrade program. However, we will be creating special Menlo Park implementation guidelines, so we can certainly hear feedback to inform those guidelines.
Yes. I, given that there is a homeowner for spots that are rented, for homes that are rented, I wonder, you know, I'm not sure what that calculation would be of which of those homeowners that are renting are 80 to 120 AMI. But I would, I would be curious for the city or for the contractor to look into that, to see if there is a way to include more of the rental units in the retrofits that we're talking about here.
For the PCE program, we don't have plans to incorporate renters, rental units at this phase of the program. So, and you know, as Rachel mentioned, there's only, you know, so much that can be expanded upon our existing program. The program is going to be implemented across the entire territory, and it needs to be consistent and also not create like silos or too many additional processes for implementer that will be doing the entire program. And it'll be homeowner-focused, and there are a lot of complexities with rentals that we would want to, you know, make sure that get attention. So we, at this time, don't intend to serve rental units.
Thank you for that clarification. Then I'm, I'd be happy to move if we're ready. But I, I know the folks have been here in support of this for a longer time, so if someone else would like to take the lead. Okay. I'd like to move a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a funding agreement with PCE as well as allocate the $40,000 for enhanced outreach and marketing and to hold on the workforce development program at this time until we reach halfway through the program.
And I'm, I'll let someone else, I just want to make sure that I understand the transition from focusing on the 80% AMI to the 120 AMI. It's like right now, like at six, for the first six months, it's going to just focus on the 80% AMI. And then would that transition to 120, assuming you don't exhaust funds at the 80, is that going to be automatic or does that come back to council? Is there some additional engagement on council on that transition from 80 AMI to 120 AMI? And I guess I'm asking maybe more of my colleagues if that had been spelled out more so than staff.
Yeah, as described in the staff report, it would be staff's discretion and working with PCE to make that decision around the six-month mark. But we could certainly involve the council in that decision-making.
I think less I'm interested in injecting the council in the decision-making, unless that's where the majority of council wants to go. I'm more interested in some visibility, some clear sort of mechanism by which we know that like, this is what was exhausted at the 80%, and now we're transitioning to the 120.
I'm supportive.
Could I clarify there, Mayor? Supportive in bringing the decision to council for the 120 or for providing transparency in one of the monthly reports?
Providing transparency as Vice Mayor Combs requested.
Thank you.
I will second the motion that's been put forward.
Okay. Mayor Taylor, shall I go ahead and restate the motion?
Yes.
If I could interject just for one second, just for clarification on the motion, the $100,000 that was set aside for workforce development is the council's intention to include that with the PCE contract at this time, because we will have a second set of funds coming out of the 4.5 million that could, you know, at that midway point. So I just want to clarify if we're increasing the agreement amount with PCE.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
There are at least three heads nodding.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. So we are not pulling out the workforce development piece at this time?
We're not moving forward with.
We are not moving forward.
Right, at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Dorr, would you mind restating the motion for me?
Yes. To adopt a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a funding agreement with PCE in the amount not to exceed $2,210,000 through June 30th, 2026, to allocate the 400,000, sorry, the $40,000 for enhanced outreach and marketing, and to hold on a workforce development program at this time.
Thank you so much. I have a motion from Councilmember Dorr and second from Councilmember Nash to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a funding agreement with PCE in the amount not to exceed $2,210,000 through June 30, 2026, to implement a state-funded home electrification program and to allocate $40,000 for enhanced outreach and marketing, and to not move forward at this time with the workforce development program. Any further city council discussion or questions? Alrighty, let's go ahead and vote. And when everyone has proceeded with voting, thank you so much. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ori and Rachel, for the, for your work on this project and presentation and moving us forward. Thank you. And thank you, Alejandra. Thank you so much for being here. It was very helpful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item M, our informational item. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's efforts to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. Deputy City Clerk Sandoval, do we have any public comments on our informational items? M1, M2, and M3?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. We are now accepting public comment for informational items. M1, city council agenda topics. M2, update on city run childcare programs. And M3, updates on the Bellhaven Community Campus startup activities. If you are in the chambers and would like to make public comment, please fill out a speaker card at the back table and return it to us at the clerk's desk. If you are online, you can raise your hand by pressing the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. And if you are calling in from a landline or cell phone, please press star nine. Mayor Taylor, we have two speakers for this item. I'll just pull up our timer. And our first speaker will be Heather Hopkins, followed by Pam Jones. And if you wouldn't mind identifying the item that you're speaking on as well.
Hi, this is Heather Hopkins. I'm speaking on the item. I don't have the number, but it's about the childcare.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, council and staff. My name is Heather Hopkins and organizing member at Community Equity Collaborative. First, I wanted to commend staff on the really excellent report and to thank council for its longtime support of city-run childcare programs. The recommendations in the staff report make a lot of sense to me. I would just add one additional area of study, which would be what it would take for the city to add or increase infant and toddler care in its childcare programming, as this is the most critical and needed form of childcare in our county, especially since, as the staff report mentioned, the launch of transitional kindergarten, which has moved a lot of our preschool kids into free TK-12 education. I look forward to the study session on this matter and wanted to offer the support of Community Equity Collaborative as you consider the future possibilities for the city's childcare programs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and our next speaker will be Pam Jones.
Good evening again, Pam Jones. And I'm speaking on M3. I absolutely could not be more excited that we're almost there. We're just, you know, holding our breath. I do have an ask though, because I think it would be helpful if on our website, if it was updated, to have pictures of the current facility. So for example, a picture of the entrance. So you could see that over the entrance, there, the sign there says 100 for 100 terminal. If the updated sign at the entrance, just before you turn off of, or as you turn off of Del Norte, that that, the picture of that sign, that would be the first. So you drive. of Del Norte, that that, the picture of that sign, that would be the first. So you drive up, you see this sign with, you know, all the programs that are there. And then as far as the inside, some additional pictures of some of the rooms there. And, you know, the senior facility, there were seniors that contacted me because they, they thought that they were on the second floor. But just some pictures so people can look at the website that may live on the, in the other night, part of the United States or somewhere around the world. But I think it would also relieve a lot of angst if people could see what was named and labeled where. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. This will be our final call for public comment on our informational items, M1, M2, and M3. And seeing none, Mayor Taylor, please continue.
Thank you, Deputy City Clerk. Bringing it back to the dais, are there any comments on, or questions or concerns on informational items? Councilmember Willison.
Thank you. Thank you to both of our public commenters. I just wanted to comment really briefly on M2, which is about the childcare. I'm looking forward to having this come to us as an official agenda item. I have to say, when I was looking at the subscription, like, we hear that childcare is really in crisis. And then I saw the, you know, how many people are signed up in each of our centers? And it's like this huge question of like, how can both things be true? Where people need childcare desperately and we have room in our childcares? And so, you know, my understanding is, as Ms. Hopkins mentioned on her public comment, that it's kind of a disconnect of what we're offering versus what the greatest need is in terms of this infant toddler. So as this item comes before us, I would really love to just lift up Ms. Hopkins' question about really understanding that issue and encourage staff to take advantage of Community Equity Collaborative, or even reaching out to Christine Padilla at Build Up San Mateo to really understand the trends and how we can meet this need. Because I think we offer a really critical service to our community. And we know that it's so much better to maintain a facility than to have to start a facility from scratch. So if we can somehow adapt to meet needs. So I'm really excited to talk about this further, and I look forward to that conversation coming up. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, thanks. I also wanted to comment on M2. I would say that, again, my impression, a little bit responding to Councilmember Willison, is the, that there's been a lag of a couple of years of childcare demand and what is actually the reality. And I think that the demand is something from two or three years ago. But on the surface of this moment, across the board, childcare facilities and those offering childcare services are in many cases seeing, you know, capacity go unutilized. In Menlo Park, that has resulted in, I know at least one childcare facility closing. But I think across the board, MCC is, is on par with, with almost all other childcare providers, early childhood education providers, and that they, again, capacity is, is, is not being completely, completely met. And so I do think part of the idea is, and part of it is TK, a part of it is that during the pandemic, you had a lot of families with younger kids actually move out with remote work flexibility. And so that all, those all things factored into like the demand situation that we're seeing now, like, which I said is really not what it once was. But to your point, it is, not only is it less, but it has changed. The other element is TK. And that has had an impact currently on, on the need for, for that last year before, before kindergarten at preschools, and seeing that that capacity are, you know, even increasing, like, right? And so what I wanted to say is, as we bring this back, I think it's important to, for the staff, and maybe this is already top of mind, that as we're looking at changes, that it has to be in sync with the school year and how that's going to roll out. And so it'd be, you know, I don't know when actually the study session is scheduled, and when some of the changes are, what's the whole timeline for them taking effect? But I think we have to understand whether we're looking at things for this upcoming school year or the following school year, because you can't, you know, people are going to have made their decisions. And so if we're changing our offerings, we have to change within that timeline or where we're going to be, you know, not in sync with where, with how these decisions are made. And so I just want to make sure we're mindful of that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Are there any other comments on the informational item? I have a couple of comments on this, even though it's coming back. One is, I appreciate the report. And if for some reason we, we still do have childcare in a year, I would like to see this report come annually, because I think it's extremely helpful to, for the council to understand what's happening with the service that we provide. And I also would like to see the city become NAYEC accredited. And also thinking about the wages, because I think that's an impact as far as the retention for the childcare field, early childhood education. And that is looking at the director's salary versus the teacher's salary, just looking at the difference. I am an advocate of raising our childcare teachers' wages as high as we can go. $80,000 a year sounds great to me, a livable wage, because 60 is not. And what else would I like to see? And I'm also curious just about considering an infant toddler program. I know that would change the dynamics of the program. And let's see what else. And I believe that is it. Those are my comments on that. And we can move on to our next agenda item, which is city manager's report. To introduce this item is our city manager, Justin Murphy.
Good evening, Mayor. I have no updates for this evening.
Thank you. Next item is city council member reports. Are there any reports from city council members? I'll start with councilmember Willison.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I have an email that I just received as the local policymaker group representative for Caltrain. And they were alerting me of the information regarding the Menlo Park Station building rehabilitation project. So Mr. Jim Lewis, if you are watching this, I know this is of great interest for you. But the good news is that Caltrain will be restoring the historical structure by repairing the roof and exterior. And work will beginning, work will be beginning as early as Friday, April 12. And it should be completed hopefully by the fall. There'll be work areas within the station and the parking lot for contractors, hopefully with minimal impacts to customers' paths of travel. There are multiple venues for writers to learn more about the project, including the project webpage. It has its own webpage. That can be found at caltrain.com/MPStationBuilding. As well, there are informational signs around the station. And writers and the public are encouraged to sign up for Caltrain's weekly construction notices to receive these types of updates every Friday, not just about the station repairs, but about all things Caltrain construction related. So thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Dora?
Yes, just to report out, I attended our Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency meeting, Bosca meeting, where we heard from, we got letters from 20 folks who said, hey, to make these meetings more accessible, please make them hybrid. And I've continued to push and ask for those meetings to be made hybrid as opposed to only in person, because they're hard to get to. And I bet most of the people listening don't even know what Bosca is. But it's the agency that decides and purchases all the, a lot of the water, most of the water that we use across the peninsula. And so I'm really excited to see us continue moving towards more transparent and accessible governance there. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Combs?
So is Bosca moving hybrid? Are you vast and they're considering?
So we've pushed them to, now they're doing live streaming is what they're moving towards. And so I'm continuing to ask them to move it forward. So it's not yet hybrid, but continuing to ask for that.
Okay, totally. I just wanted to make that clear. I want to report out, and I've shared this with the city manager, that I attended Menlo Park annual egg hunt this weekend. And it was a great event. But I have to share that I was disappointed that the city had no role in the event this year. And this was a departure from past years. And it's again, not clear to me still, like, how and why that decision was made. I think, again, it was a great event. I think the city's involvement was a key part of what made it and has historically made it a great event. And I hate to be like a broken record about these things. I can promise you, when I ran for city council, it was not my thinking that like, I would need to be spending much energy and effort making the case for, you know, egg hunts and fireworks with Santa and gymnastics and summer concert series. But I will continue to make them. I think that they have a lot of enormous value to the community, especially families. I think the city plays an important role in policing these events. And again, these are not my pet projects. These are things that existed way before Drew showed up in Menlo Park. I actually remember the first summer, my wife and I were in Menlo Park, and I think it was an email or something, or a flyer I got from the city. And it was like, oh, come to the Fourth of July parade. And I was, turned to my wife and was like, oh my gosh, this little city has a Fourth of July parade. And how cool. And I'm thinking floats and marching bands and dignitaries and cars. And so I was like, let's go to this Fourth of July parade. And then I went to it and I realized that, oh, you are the parade. You're just walking down the street with the police escort. And there are no, there are no floats or there are no dignitaries and cars, and there are no huge marching bands. And I can't describe, I just remember it as being, and the best word that comes to mind is adorable. And, and, and I just want to continue to say that, again, these things have value, enormous value to many residents of Menlo Park, and is important for the city to stay, to stay involved as an active and key sponsor of them. And that is my report out.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
So I have a report out, but I'm wondering if it's legitimate to ask, what was the difference because the city was not involved in the egg hunt?
There was difference. I don't want to go into detail. The fire district hosted it exclusively this year. In the past, they have had a role, but, but the city has also been involved. I do think that there are differences. I'm not going to go, I don't think it's important to go into detail. But I think for me, the question is, like, if this is something that the city has done, and if it's had great value, if hundreds of kids have gotten, have gotten great experiences from it, what's the reason by not doing it? And so it seems like to me that there is this solution out there that's in search of a problem with these, with this, with this sort of tinkering. And so it's not as less for me, like, what was, I think that the event was certainly different, or there was differences. But to me, again, my case is, what was the issue with the status quo?
I'm just going to remind the council that this is not agendized.
Thank you. And thank you. So my report out is, I was at the rethink waste, or the South Bay Waste Management Authority Partners Retreat. And Ms. Mello was also there representing the city, as was Ms. Frandine, actually representing the sewer district. And she's also a city employee. And we talked about long range issues such as site planning. We are running out of space at the current site in San Carlos for all of the trucks that are needed for our waste management. We talked about electric waste trucks and versus hydrogen trucks, and just how we're looking at electrifying the fleet. We talked about that the, in 10 to 22 years, we'll be running out of space at Ox Mountain, the trash area, and what will we be doing with all the trash at that point? And how can, just what are the planning? And also about other parts of the trash, and especially our composting and just generally a lot of waste, which I never knew was quite as interesting as it truly is. Beyond that, I wanted to tout that the Middle Avenue survey has been the, residents are still requested to fill out the Middle Avenue survey. If you go onto the city website and type in Middle Avenue survey, it will come up. And please, it's open till April 5th at this point. And everyone is encouraged to fill it out and provide input and feedback into what is happening on Middle Avenue with the complete streets. Thank you.
Thank you for the report outs. And at this time, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.